These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting. And good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer. Unplug just a little bit. And head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic port city of Alpena. Located on the sunrise shore of Michigan. Only a few hours drive, but miles away from the way to the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay. Where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere. Count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse. Or the mass that jut into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena. A haven from the world. That's Pure Michigan. Your trip begins at Michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the municipal council meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the city of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening, welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, December 1st, 2014. Call the order please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Nowak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here. Please ask for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we had the opportunity to read the minutes of the regular session, November 17th, 2014, and the closed session, November 17th, 2014. I have one grammatical correction that Greg made on the closed session minutes that I showed each of you before the meeting. Other than that, are they okay? Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Greg has one?
Yes, under item 10, communications petitions, Larry Clark. We had a miscommunication between him and us. He always attends the township board meetings on the first Monday. So he will appear before the council to give an update on the 23 South project improvement project next meeting on the 15th.
Move we strike 10A from the agenda?
Nielsen?
Yes.
Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Johnson?
Yes.
Citizens hearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during city council meeting you're allowed to address council. If you do, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Good evening. Jamie Forbes. I currently reside at the 937 South. I am just here tonight to introduce myself. Thank you for letting me speak. I represent an organization called Freedom Michigan. We are charged with trying to amend the Elliot Larson Act to include protections for sexual orientation and gender identity. Right now, the Elliot Larson Act protects folks who are being discriminated against at the workplace and in housing on the basis of gender, race, a few other classes. But there's no protections for LGBT folks. So we're just trying to amend it to include those parties also. So I'm just here in town along with 24 other organizers on the state to hopefully just cause some conversations to be happening about this issue. I think a lot of folks assume that those classes are already protected, and they're not. And so, just something that we're trying to work on. We expect for a bill to come before the senate and the house and the state to amend these two. And so we're just hoping that people can just talk about these two during the length of sessions and hopefully it is passed. So thank you for letting me speak tonight. If anyone would like to talk after the meeting about it, please let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the consent agenda this evening. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $356,134.83. Excuse me. B is the approval of parades to be held within the city limits for 2015 Memorial Day, 4th of July parade, Christmas parade, and Shriner's parade. C is the recognition of the here on Humane Society as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining charitable gaming licenses. And D is approval of the 2015 municipal council meeting schedule.
Can anybody approve the consent agenda as presented?
Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, no announcements, no proclamations. We have a report of officers. A is request to present financial reports on a quarterly basis rather than a monthly basis.
At the last council meeting, I simply asked council to consider if I could report to you quarterly rather than monthly, just to simply free up some, a little bit of time every month now to do other projects. If there's any questions or anything I could address on that.
Karen, you would just be guessing, but how much time does it take you to put the monthly report together?
Just two to three hours a month.
Then I assume if it's quarterly, that would be expanded a little bit, right?
No, because it's the same report, but it'll just have three months instead of one. And then it'll have the same cover and the, it'll cost us a little less because we won't have to do that monthly, as far as just the plastic cover and the paper used. It's more of a, for us, it's more efficiency. We can take that time and use it for something else. We've gained a lot of efficiency with our software, and we're trying to implement more of that, and we haven't gotten back to that yet. So if we can free up some time, it would help us do other projects. We almost have all of our cemetery records in, so there's another project that's important to the people, because they'll be able to go in now on the internet and look up maybe where their ancestors are buried, or where, somewhere in the cemetery where they would like to do, they could do a search. So there's a lot of things we want to get going on, and so the more efficiency that we can have in one area, we can use it somewhere else.
Do we have any history, Karen, on, and why we, we used to be quarterly at one time, and then it's been monthly? Do we know why it was changed to monthly? I'm just assuming because of the, you know, the history that we've had here recently with the downturn in money?
You know, Mike, I don't remember it being quarterly. It may have been, but if that was the case, that probably is why, because of the downturn in the economy. This is something we can try. If you just feel like you don't have enough information, we could just go right back to monthly.
I was just, you know, curious if there was any criteria that other communities have used, such as, you know, if any line or department becomes 10% out of line or something like that, that they would, you would report on that department individually, saying here's one that we see we may have to report on monthly. I know some organizations will do that, you know, in business especially, where the, if a department's out of line, you're basically coming in, you know, to the monthly meeting and reporting on what you're doing to get your department back in line. So, I mean, that certainly is a criteria that we could always use if we decide to go this way as well. So, I mean, currently in our business, I mean, we have quarterly meetings with ownership. So, I mean, that's not unusual for me to have this type of, you know, reporting.
And sometimes a monthly meeting, there's little dips in that just because of the time of the year, whereas a quarterly will give you a little bit better picture over, you know, over a set amount of time, where the monthly ones may give you a look at something that's not really the regular budget every month. For example, like I always tell you in the summer, when you got your summer help, your labor's going to be higher. Things like that, whereas a quarterly, I can show you that a little bit better. If there was ever any, you know, anything way out of whack on the budget, I would come to you and tell you why.
I, um, the only outside opinion I got, I guess, was from our editor.
We all got that weekend, and I think everybody got that, and I guess, I guess that outside of his offensiveness to me, is that, is the hard copy. In reference to the hard copy, we don't receive a hard copy. I, I should speak for myself. I don't receive a hard copy. I don't think anybody on council receives a hard copy. And so, I guess, who receives a hard copy?
Nobody, pretty much just myself.
You give me one.
A few people.
And I guess my, and my other concern was, is that, yeah, I do have a lot of other meetings and boards and things that I'm on, and there always is a monthly treasures report at these other functions that I'm at. I guess the difference here would be the availability of that information that you mentioned. And so if I were to agree to go to quarterly, like, for instance, my other meetings, I don't see those people or that treasurer commonly throughout that month. But here, I have maybe more access. So my question would be, do I have access to the type of information that you present to us? Or is that something that you structure specifically for the meeting? Is that something that...
We can get you anything you want. So, yes, I could put on the website the same thing that we get, or maybe even a little simplified version of it, if you want to take a peek at it.
Even a simplified version would be, because the key points that I kind of pick up on, and I don't know if the media does, I guess, but I certainly do, to present to the general public would be, is the percentages that we're at. You know, we're at this percentage of our budget, and we're at this percentage of our revenue. That always tends to be interesting, and maybe, maybe just some highlights as far as where the departments are. Not necessarily all the detail, because we can, like you said, we can look, as long as we're not lazy, we can ask you or go to you and ask you, but I don't think it really classifies us any different. If, if we don't want to read what you give us every month, or every month when we come here, then we're not going to read it, whether you presented to us on Friday or not. So that's kind of what I picked up on, on that particular opinion, is that if it's there before our meeting and we don't look at it over the weekend, then, I mean, that's our issue as elected officials. But if we want to see that information, you're telling me that I will be able to find, I'd be able to get it.
Yes, and I could, if anybody wants to see something specific, anybody, the media or the, just call me.
Yeah.
Because BSNA will do all kinds of reports. If they're even just interested in one specific month, I can get information.
Right.
And like I always said too, you know, our cafers online, our budgets are online. They've always been online. We don't put our financials online just because of the length of them. We don't ever print them in the paper. So that really isn't a, that's kind of a mute point that Bill mentioned, like, people like to read it. Well, we don't ever print in the paper. It'd be tremendously expensive.
I gathered he meant me as people.
Okay.
That's what I picked up on. I didn't talk conversely, but, so, because those are, and those were, he had some real concerns, and I gathered that out of his, out of what he had to say. And so he had some concerns that I picked up on, and if those are answered for, which I feel like they are, then I'm okay with that. I don't want to see a lot of printed material, but I don't see printed material anyhow. So, and alleviate something that, to alleviate time is something that, you know, I would certainly agree, I've seen how small your office is as far as personnel wise goes, so...
Yeah, we'll just keep looking for other efficiencies also. And we can try them. Some of them may work, some may not, but we'll keep you informed like we always do, so...
And it is a decision that we can turn around on a dime, so to speak. So, I'm always way more comfortable with something that I can say, you know, four, five months from now, hey, this isn't working, I don't feel like I know everything I knew before. So...
I agree with you as well, is that I think staff would probably tell you, hopefully Karen would, that, you know, from the questions that I've asked, and being not an expert on it, that, you know, it is read every month and explained, and, you know, just to try to get the details and stuff. So, I know we're using it, but at the same time, I think that it's so close, monthly is repetitive information at times, and I never want to get it to the point where we're not looking at it in detail because we've just seen it last month. So I think, you know, for that reason, and for, you know, what I've done in the past, I just think quarterly is a better option, in my mind.
Now, when you brought it up the first time, you know, automatically it's like, sure. And the reason, you know, I thought that is I trust you. You know, I would say you're the best treasurer of the state. I wouldn't trade you for anything, so, you know, I didn't...
I had that all set up, and I'd trade.
You know, if it was a matter of with month-to-month, we had issues. You know, our departments were going over, and we had staff for departments that we weren't, didn't have a lot of trust in, that I'd certainly see the need, month-to-month, to stay on top of it. But since I've been here, and you've obviously been here that whole time, you know, I don't, I don't see the need for that. You guys come in every quarter under, you know, budget, almost every quarter that I've been here. So, yeah, I think you've earned a couple of months now in between, and like you said, if you can use that time better spent. As the mayor mentioned, if we get into this and people get upset, or it's not working, well, we can always go back. But, I would hate to, the only reason I would be against it is because it looks less transparent. I certainly don't think it is less transparent, but I guess it could seem that way. But certainly that information's readily available. I trust that you'll bring anything to us on a monthly basis that is an issue or it is a concern. And frankly, I haven't seen it on month-to-month issue anyway, so, I appreciate you bringing it up and finding, you know, some time to do other things.
Thank you.
I think people don't realize too how easy it is to come and talk with you. I know when I read the budget and there have been things that just didn't click, I've been in your office more than one time to say, what, what is this about? And it's very, very, very easy to get information for anything that you have questions about on a daily basis, if that's, if need be.
And people can walk in. They don't have to make an appointment, or, you know, Julie is also well-versed in everything, so either one of us can help.
I'm very comfortable with quarterly. It is a nice time savings, and, and I'm very, and I know where you live. Well, I can come see you.
One floor below us, it seems.
Yes, that's right.
And we certainly will always see the bills to be allowed every meeting, which is, that's really important, I think, for us to be able to see where, specifically where the money is, where money is being spent. There again, Greg or Karen are always available for, or Don, in this week's case for me, available to ask questions about anything you see on the bills, so...
Yeah, please do ask questions on that too. If I don't have it off the top of my head, I'll just go and look at the invoices.
It's a good idea. I like it.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we're better, probably should have done that first, I suppose, but...
I move the monthly financial report be changed to a quarterly financial report.
Second.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Nowak?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you, Karen.
Yes, thank you.
Unfinished business this evening, ready to serve charge of Reed and Lynda Woodruff presented to us last meeting.
At the November 3rd city council meeting, reached the order of approach city council regarding the ready-to-serv charges that were billed for on the properties she and her husband owned throughout the city. Her statement was that she was not aware of the meter size and did not feel that she should have paid high ready-to-serv charges, as she intended to reduce the meter sizes where possible and still meet the needs of the building. It appears from her discussion and meeting with Greg, Sunday, and I prior to attendance at the city council meeting, that she may be able to reduce at least one of the two locations, meters of one of those two locations. As a matter of fact, last week, the one meter was changed out. Her concern was that if she was going to reduce the meter in the near future, why should she be required to pay the higher ready-to-serv charge from the previous billing? Greg, Sunday, and I both explained that this, as this was the meter in place at the time of the billing, that she would be required to pay that bill, and any future bills could be reduced based on the smaller meter size. She then declared as to why, if every other consumer with a small meter, one inch or smaller, had their meter replaced, she should have to pay for the same-sized meter if she could reduce any of her locations to one inch or smaller. Based on discussions with Mike Lewinsky, our policy regarding this has been as follows, and has been relayed to many customers anticipating changing the meter size. If the meter is relatively new and recording property, we haven't had service calls, we haven't had complaints, we haven't had to go over testing, et cetera, the property owner is charged for the replacement meter. The basis being that it is the property owner's desire to have this work performed to reduce their cost. Due to the relatively new age of the existing meter and no apparent recording issues, the city would not be changing it out at that time. We would just go out and change it out, because we don't have a product, but because they want to change it out to reduce their costs on down the road, then we wouldn't charge them for it. Vice versa, if the meter is of older vintage and is suspected not reading properly, a smaller meter is provided at no cost to the property owner, as the meter should have been changed out. And this was the case with the Woodruffs. It was done last week, they were not charged for the meter because the meter they had was an older model, and was of a time that it should have been replaced.
Excellent. Thanks for following up on that.
We will get a copy of the memo, Rich, we'll get it to the Woodruffs. And then if they have any questions, they can get back with us.
Thank you, sir.
Just as a follow-up on that, I'm sure most of you are aware that, you know, the chamber has been doing a survey regarding business nonprofits and their water bills with the changeover, often primarily due to the ready-to-serv charge. Staff is looking in to the issue and looking to see if there are options or possible things that could be done on, based on certain criteria or whatever. And we're in the process of finishing that up, and the hope would be that we would be able to bring something back to council with a recommendation, whatever that may be. We have not made that yet, as to whether to do anything or not, and if it is to do, do it, then we would make that recommendation at that time. And then the council can decide what it wishes to do, as far as implementing any changes to the current billing process that we have.
Okay, new business this evening, proposed sale and funding for retired Alpena Police Department K-9.
Hey, I will be handling that. Joel's unable to be here because of a personal situation. Approximately two weeks ago, Max, the city's nine-year-old German Shepherd, was taken to a local veterinarian for an emergency visit after a battery test, he was diagnosed with a bladder infection and a stomach ulcer. While the ailments are treatable and his condition has reportedly improved somewhat, Max has also begun to demonstrate other symptoms associated with an aging service dog. After discussing the matter with Lieutenant Hamp and Sergeant Brooks, Max's handler, we agreed the time may come for Max to retire from service. Sergeant Brooks has expressed a desire to purchase Max and assume responsibility for his continued care as he did with APD's first K-9 Rex. Due to the nature of Max's training, I believe this is the most viable option, as he obviously would not be a candidate for adoption. With that understood, I also do not wish Sergeant Brooks to shoulder the entire burden of caring for Max, an animal that has assisted with the protection of this community for several years. As such, the chief is proposing the city temporarily provide a reasonable amount of funds for the care of Max. What is being suggested is a $250 cap for the city's portion for any veterinarian-related expenses for each fiscal year to conclude on June 30th of 2017. So it would be placed in, not this year's, but next year's budget, which will begin July 1st of next year, and then the year after. Sergeant Brooks would be responsible for any veterinarian-related expenses exceeding $250 and other costs associated with caring for the animal. Lastly, there has been a question that has been posed about plans to replace Max. Due to several factors, we have opted to suspend the program at this time, and Chief Jett and I have had discussions about this, and we just feel that at this point in time, we need to do a thorough review of the program, not knowing if we, if there is a change in handler especially, which we don't know if there would be or not, but if so, then it becomes a very expensive item. Usually the training is, I believe, two or three weeks down in Ohio, and is very costly, as well, of course, the cost of acquiring another dog. In the past, I know, at least for the first dog, it was through, I think Zonta actually helped purchase the dog. I don't know about Max, if that was the city purchased...
I don't think Zonta did that.
Yeah, so, you do have those costs, and we just want to review in terms of, in relation to how often the dog is used and that. So, at this point, we just decided to suspend the program for at least a period so that evaluation could be completed by the chief. And in the near future, then a report will be forthcoming to council on that. In the meantime, also, when I discussed this with the chief today, his intent is, he would like to have basically a retirement ceremony for Max, and do that at our next council meeting. I have the dog here, I have a certificate. I suggested a very large dog bone as well, that he probably appreciate that more than the certificate, and that we officially retire Max at that time. So that will be our intent at the next meeting. So at this time, it's simply to ask council for their concurrence with the bill of sale that you have, that includes the city budgeting $250 in each of the next two fiscal years towards any veterinary costs.
My first thought, I have a question, actually. Maybe this would not be appropriate, but if there should be a situation that we would need a dog, could he come out of retirement briefly to assist with, say, a rescue or a...
I don't know if that would be appropriate or not, and I don't want to answer for that. I don't know if Billy...
I did, I didn't bring, I didn't bring it up that way, but I did ask Chief Jett, what, in the period of time between Max's retirement and us deciding to get a new one, what are our options for dogs? And he said that...
State police.
That the state police or some other community would bring theirs in. I don't, I really don't think that...
That's good to know.
Yeah. It would be an option to, because I don't know how that really works, but if the animal is, is to the point where he shouldn't be operating, then I doubt we would want to bring him back. But with their other, there are other dogs in the area that they would bring in, that is...
Probably the state police would probably be the first one that we would contact and see if it's available.
How old is this dog?
Nine.
About nine, I think.
Nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, it says here he's nine.
Which is getting up there for this type of dog.
Yeah, and my, I guess my only input was, and I've, and I've talked to chief about this on a couple of occasions, was that I just didn't feel like, you know, Max is that, he's that line between a human officer and a dog officer. He is an actual officer. He's got a badge. I just felt that as a community, we do have, I felt like we have some responsibility for his care, but at the same time, we don't, we may not always have the same opinion as Sergeant Brooks might, as far as what his care would be. So, he would have an option to do whatever he pleased, as far as veterinary and surgery and things of that nature, but I just felt like we should have something in place for him. And Joel felt that $250 would be good, that he'd be able to find that easily in his budget, so, or maybe not easily, but...
Well, suddenly budget down for the next two years, that's all.
Yeah, he's down to like $80 right now, this year, so, in that particular budget, so... It certainly doesn't seem like a lot to me, especially since we've been paying to have him, but paying his other costs, which I'm sure were more than $250 over the course of, well, he's nine, but I'm not sure how long we had him, but... of, well, he's nine, but I'm not sure how long we have him, but, so it seemed appropriate for me, so...
It is a humane thing to do.
Do you, you have, obviously had an opportunity to read the purchase order, purchase agreement is fine.
Yes, fine.
I move we approve the proposed sale and funding for Max.
A second.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Nowak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
I move adjourn.
Second.
You are watching All About Alpena.